Please, I have to pledge allegiance. So, Brian is away from work and will be zooming in, but I'm going to get started and he'll just be coming in within a few minutes. I will start with the president's report and I'm going to be super brief tonight. I just want to say, evening, we put this in our session. I think I can speak for us all that I say we feel good about the budget that we are proving today. And I also want to let the community know that absentee ballots will be available starting tomorrow. We're going to discuss the budget in more detail and much more in depth when we come to it on the agenda. So I'm not going to go into it at this point. I do want to commend our seniors on a wonderful senior class play this past weekend, as well as all the ongoing performances and celebrations that are happening. It's all very, very exciting and we can't wait to celebrate your graduation in a couple of weeks. I also want to wish a happy Pride Month to all of our families celebrating. And that's really all I've got, rewinding down the year and it's been an exciting time.
Great, thank you, Hillary. All right, something's going to happen with the sound, I feel like it's too loud.
We need to address 1.1.1, I think you three said. Okay, so I am going to move 1.1.1, which is adopting the 24-25 Board of Education meeting schedule. Can I have a second? Okay, we previously discussed that we may actually need to make some changes. We're not ready to adopt this this evening, so we are going to table this for a future meeting date. There's no urgency. We will get it all approved before we have to, but it was on the agenda, so I wanted to move it and let the community know that we're not ready to actually adopt it tonight. We're going to table it tonight and then adopt it at a future meeting. Motion to table? Yeah, I'm moving to table. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Yes, that is table.
Okay, so are we ready? All right, so before Josh and I present the budget, I just want to share a few comments. So as I shared right after the budget voted at our last meeting, our vote was, it was democracy in action. And our last budget had two controversial issues in it. Increasing police presence and exceeding the tax cap, which is unusual for us. Improving instruction, supporting the emotional growth of our students and keeping our schools safer. Always still going to be our objectives, but we need to do this differently and be mindful of what the community can and will support. So we've worked together to create a budget that we believe works for everybody. We are one of the best school districts in New York State. Over the weekend, 29 of our sophomores, science research students out of 54 won awards at a regional competition that included over 700 students. Our girls lacrosse team and track teams this weekend are headed up to state competition for hopefully the championships. We just had 23 staff receiving tenure. Every week you can see in our press releases the amazing work happening in our schools, which we should all be proud of. The budget continues to build and expand on this outstanding work. But before we begin with our slide deck, I also want to acknowledge that we have families and staff members that are still very concerned about safety. My entire family is in our schools. I'm in the schools with your children and I know the seriousness of this responsibility and we will continue to work together to ensure the school remains safe spaces for our students to learn and our staff to work. And David, if you could pull up the presentation. So I just want to remind our community, we have state-of-the-art security enhancements in our school district. We will continue to make safety and security decisions based on our audits from experts in the field and best practices on research on school safety. You can see some of those adjustments we've made since I've been here outlined in our slide of what is currently in place and then in our next slide of what we have inside of the proposed budget for the 25-24 academic year. We will continue to be a leader in this area because that is what our students and staff deserve. Okay, so now we're going to move into our new proposed budget for the 24-25 school year. So our new proposed budget is within the levy limit and it's an imposed increase of about $2.4 million. And then it's still framed within the three strategic questions, which are fiscal responsibility, academic program enhancement, and social emotional learning. We also, in developing the new budget, continue to be mindful of our five strategic priorities and have built our program around making sure that we are continuing to improve based on our strategic initiatives. And so now I'm going to move to Josh, who will talk more about the specifics within the budget in terms of the fundamentals.
Sure, so our new proposed budget for 24-25 is a 1.77% budget-to-budget increase with a 1.81% tax levy increase. And the disparity is due to utilizing less fund balance in the coming school year than this one. So to, from our previous budget to get to a tax compliant budget, we had to reduce our tax levy by about $1.4 million. And that was, we got there by decreasing expenditures and increasing revenue on our fund balance allocation. And just highlight, so from our original proposed to the previously proposed, we've already reduced a central office administrative position and an art faculty member that was due to enrollment in courses. And so now to achieve the additional 1.4 million in reductions through our work sessions, we are transferring two staff developers to the classrooms. So two staff developers, staff members have previously requested transfers to the classrooms. So that cost savings of $250,000. And we'll also be reducing our summer professional development, a cost savings of $30,000.
I just want to be mindful that now that we are moving towards a second budget vote, our staff assignments won't be finalized until after that vote takes place, according to our contractual obligations with the CC tip.
So additionally, we'll be reducing the three school resource officers from the budget that was from what was originally proposed. We have a business office clerical that is currently part-time and that individual remained part-time. And then a variety of operations and maintenance reductions of $60,000. Additionally, we'll be reducing our contractual expenses by $46,000. A middle school clerical position due to a vacancy of $59,000. And we have a significant amount of clerical hiring that's going to commence beginning July 1st. So due to civil service and due to the timeline of hiring, we anticipate a $20,000 cost savings in salaries and benefits from that. Additionally, we will be increasing our use of unrestricted fund balance by about $300,000. And we feel comfortable doing that because since the previously proposed budget till now, we have a sale of old technology equipment, which we intend to say being about $100,000. And our interest earnings to date are about $1.7 million for the year, as opposed to our budget $950,000. So this still leaves us in a comfortable place that will have 4% within our fund balance and the ability to transfer some funds into our restricted reserves. And so you could see here in our expenditure side, we actually, the three highlighted slides are the changes from the previously proposed budget. We had went from a 0.31% increase to a 0.18% decrease in salaries. Our benefits went down slightly bit and O&amp;M went down significantly and that's generally due to the $600,000 savings of the SROs. So we're 1.77% budget-to-budget increase. And here, right, it shows that the places that the revenues are changing are in our appropriated fund balance and our property tax is going from 2.99 to 1.81, which is right at the tax levy limit. And you can see here sort of our budget-to-budget. And basically, if you put a line through where the budget and the tax levy increase, they're pretty close to each other for this year. Over the past 15 years, we're right at the median. Half the dots would be above that line and half the dots would be below that line. And here again is just our property tax cap, our tax levy of 1.81%. And our tax levy is at exactly the 1.81%, so this is a tax compliant budget. And here's the property tax report card as required, which has all of the information of how we arrived at our tax cap of 1.81% with some exclusions and inclusions and showing that this is a tax compliant budget. And then here you could see the tax analysis. There is a tax calculator on the website so that folks can plug in their assessed values to see the estimated tax increase or decrease. You see in Newcastle, there's a 2.22% increase and in Mount Pleasant, there's a 3.42% decrease in the taxes that are levied. And again, go to our website, there's information there that has a calculator for you to put information. And then just-
So I'd like to talk a little bit about what would happen if the budget wasn't successful and we moved into contingency. So you can see here, we'll be having our revote on the 18th. And if it's approved, then the board would be adopting the budget, the budget as presented tonight, provided they approve the new proposed budget. If it's not approved, then the board would be adopting the contingency budget, which would include a reduction of about $3.5 million. But when you move into contingency, you have different rules that you need to follow. So this is what we would have to be looking at reducing in order to balance our budget for the new school year. So we'd have to cut approximately $700,000 from the administration line, about $1.8 million from the program. And you can see what that could look like. It would be a reduction of positions, a reduction of professional development. We'd have to look at our extracurricular program. We'd have to reduce those costs and we'd have to look at different models if we wanted to continue our lower level programs to fund them. And then we would have to make some mandatory reductions as well in our capital. So the differing projects that we already have planned. And one of the things that is most significant to understand is that we offset the costs for non-CCFD facilities use and we would not be able to do that anymore under our, under the regulations. And so we'd have to talk about whether or not we would be able to continue to allow outside groups to use our programs. And then, of course, we'd have to talk about our major events and try and to stay across there. So just, let's talk a little bit more about the community use of facilities. The, this is straight from the regulations. If you adopt a budget that's contingent prohibits us from spending any money in certain areas, including community use of school facilities. And those are our main community partners and we'd have to talk about if we were going to allow our partners to continue to use our spaces, what those costs would now be since we couldn't subsidize those. So I think it's important for everyone to understand that aspect of the contingency budget, which we have no control over moving forward. And so we are recommending tonight to the board that a proposed budget of about $140 million for the board's consideration, which is about a $2.4 million increase over the, this current year's budget for your consideration. And we feel like we've been able to keep our lower, lower class sizes, which we know are important to our, our community, based on their feedback. We were able to increase our extracurricular program, our athletics. We're working towards our strategic plan, improving our technology. We have our infrastructure improvements in place. We are still considering and continuing to move forward on our safety and security enhancements and we are decreasing our reliance on fund balance, which we know is important to our fiscal health. And so just to remind the community, the voter information is the same. You can certainly check your voter status with Lisa. We have absentee ballots that will be available starting tomorrow. And anyone who's eligible to vote on the 18th is welcome to come to the gym where we'll be holding the vote again at Forest Fairleigh High School. And so if you have any budget questions, the process is the same. Certainly contact the board, myself, or Josh. And then in terms of our budget calendar, if the board adopts the proposed budget tonight, then on Wednesday, we'll have a Zoom webinar for families that have questions about the budget. And then we have our required hearing on the 11th. And then after that, we'll do our district-wide mailing and then we'll be set to have the budget vote on the 18th. And then depending on what the results are, the board will be adopting the budget on the 20th, whether it be the proposed budget, if it's approved by 50% of voters, or the contingent budget that I just described a few slides ago.
Okay. So I guess it makes sense for us to comment at this point. Um, I think each of us may want to say something. Is that, Ryan, you can hear us, right? Okay, great. Um, thank you. I want to start by just letting the community know that we did have a work session today at 5:00 where we talked through the machinations of the budget in response to the previous work session, which was, I believe, last week. Um, we had asked the administration to come back with a budget that had some changes from last week's proposal at the work session, specifically preserving the small class sizes through sixth grade. And there were some other cuts that needed to be made in order to do that. They came back today with their proposal as well as options, which we discussed. And we felt comfortable moving forward with the proposal that you just saw reviewed a few minutes ago. But I just want to let the community know that we did go through all of those options and questions and concerns at the 5 o'clock work session. I feel very good about this budget. As you all know, I felt good about the last budget, but the community did not. This budget is tax compliant, tax cap compliant. It prioritizes students and teachers. The new budget iteration maintains the sectioning that was originally proposed. We've been able to keep the smaller elementary and middle school class sizes that were in the first budget. We've been able to make cuts that do not result in any person losing a job. All cuts to positions have been not filling open positions, whether those positions were through retirement or people asking to move into different positions. All cuts are to positions, not people, and I feel really good about that. All staff and faculty will stay and new faculty will be hired to fill new roles as needed. None of the cuts we are making are any student-facing positions. And we know that this budget will support our students and our teachers and continue to provide the exceptional level of education that our community expects. So I feel really good about it and I want to give my fellow board members an opportunity to say something as well.
So I see this moment as an opportunity, a second chance to do things better. It's during times of hardship that we truly see where our strengths lie and where we need improvement. It reveals to us what we possess and what we lack. I want to express my gratitude to the community for sharing their feedback with us this past week. I also acknowledge that 3,164 voters sent us a message. And of the 3,164 votes, 2016 voted no to the school budget resolution and 1137 voted yes. So here we are for round two. We cannot focus solely on community opinion. It cannot substitute the board's judgment. Community input is valuable, but it can't be the sole factor guiding our decisions. We do not govern by survey. We must balance the feedback with what we believe is right for the district. That's why we were elected. As a board, we were elected to exercise judgment and make choices that serve the best interests of the district. We are not making decisions, especially difficult ones, based on emotions. Important policy decisions should not hinge solely on a budget vote. Relying solely on the outcome of a vote completely undermines the necessity for thoughtful deliberations. A budget vote, which essentially revolves around the question of whether or not to allocate a certain dollar amount, overlooks the broader considerations necessary for effective governance. Policies should instead stem from thorough board discussions informed by research and data, leading to a reasoned and rational outcome. We need to draw on our resources, our partnerships, to continue our work, to keep moving forward. Focus on the basic foundational needs to further improve educational quality and academic initiatives. Finding a balance between academic achievement and mental wellness is critical, especially now where we are just coming out of the pandemic. So much has been lost, disrupted, removed, and sacrificed. We must give our students the care and attention they seek and need. We need to close the gaps. Every student, each student, all students must be given the same level of care and attention to the success, to be successful in their learning. So with that said, I thank the administration. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate the effort in reducing the budget for it to be tax cap compliant. I will vote yes to adopt the proposed budget. Thank you.
Ryan, you want to go in your general spot?
Uh, sure. Just want to echo the appreciation to the administration for finding reductions that we can live with, that don't affect a basic instructional program, don't affect teachers, don't affect students in a direct way. When I look back to what I said in April, I remember reflecting that the vote for the first budget was going to be a chance for clarity. We really got that clarity in the outcome. And I think the administration has taken that feedback to heart and what they've shared in this revised budget. So I appreciate that. I think that there's been thoughtful consideration given to the options available. And, you know, we've got to play the long game here. I, you know, as Kaylee said, we can't govern on survey. We want to use good judgment, use reason in making our determinations. And while, yes, I did vote to adopt the budget last time, despite having reservations about some of what was included, I'm glad to see that, you know, we seem to have a new consensus here about how to move forward. So I also support, you know, adopting this budget moving forward. Over to you, Matt.
Thanks. I'm going to be brief because I actually really don't feel well. I just think that I would echo Kaylee's comments on the, I think there was an unintended positive consequence by the failure of the budget. I like to think in athletic terms, sometimes when you lose a game by a very small margin, you tinker a little bit and say, okay, here's how we get better. We got destroyed, that budget got destroyed, the community spoke. It was very clear, it was very loud, but I don't think it's as easy as just pointing out two things linearly that the community might not have wanted. I think what we really need to take away from that is that the unintended positive consequence that occurred last week for the people who are here for our work session was they got to see us work in public and have a very transparent discussion about the budget, what needed to come out, what needed to go, what needed to definitely stay in, which obviously small class size was a huge factor for all of us. And I think that was really instructive and informative. And I think having those discussions out in public like that, the transparency is the number one thing. I think you could talk about SROs, you could talk about over the tax cap. I think the number one thing that that margin of defeat said to us was they don't have confidence in the way we're governing, to Kaylee's point. And we, it's not our job or your job, Pristine, to crowdsource, you know, hot button topics. Okay, SROs, last year, those surveys told us something completely different than this vote told us. So I think the error is in asking people. We need to be transparent and have those discussions and then get the responsiveness from the community back. I think the number one thing that the community spoke, what they want from us is to just be really forward and transparent with them, no matter what it is we are discussing. And I think I'm hopeful that we set a new precedent for ourselves and we're going to have a lot more of those discussions out in the public. And I think we're going to be able to do our jobs, we're going to be able to do your job a lot better with that level of transparency. And again, everything that's in this new budget, I support and I'm happy to move forward.
I'm sorry, I don't feel well. I just want to echo what all of my colleagues said. I feel very strongly in agreement with them. Between the work session last week and the work session today, where we discussed a lot of options for the budget, some of which we decided to use, some of which we didn't. I think that was a really great opportunity for the people who were able to watch, to see us in action and to see all of the conversations that go into the final presentation that you saw today. I feel really good about the recommended reductions. They won't impact students in a negative way. We're keeping within the tax cap. We are prioritizing small class sizes, things that everyone can get behind. I want to thank the administration for working with us and giving us a lot of options to work with and being able to help us hone in on which were the, the most impactful for the budget, but also the least detrimental to your, you know, day-to-day workings for the school. Because we need to cut things, but we want to make sure that we're being smart about what we cut. And I really think that we did a good job on that. And I appreciate you all, both last week and today, bringing us more options to talk through. And I support today's budget.
Great. Okay, so that brings us to committee reports. Does anybody, any committee reports?
Final plug for Saturday for the sports boosters at Captain Lawrence in Mount Kisco. It's a great opportunity to have a really nice night and also to support our athletic teams.
That brings us to the public comment period. We welcome public comments and in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. I'm sorry. Board members may also be contacted via email or phone. After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion amongst themselves regarding comments presented. So if anybody has any public comments, please come to the microphone. Okay, well, that moves us then to approvals and ratifications. So 3.1 is be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts the proposed budget in the amount of, this is the hardest part, $140,747,738 and zero cents, and ratifies the property tax report card for the 2024-2025 school year. I will move 3.1. Can I have a second?
I have a second.
Does anybody have any additional thoughts or questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I present, oh, sorry, Ryan. I present 4.1 instructional.
I will move that we accept Dr. Ackerman's recommendations under 4.1 as presented. Second. Any questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend, I'm sorry, I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I will recommend that we, I will move that we accept Dr. Ackerman's recommendations under 4.2. Second. Questions or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Use of a consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and that item will be considered and voted on separately. Thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue is recommend. So does anybody have anything they'd like to remove from this evening's consent agenda? Then can I have a motion, please, for 5.1 through 5.6? Motion. Any questions or concerns? No, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that brings us to six. 6.1 is an agreement for services with Christopher O'Neill for ninth grade physics. I will move 6.1. I have a second? Second.
Christopher is our new physics teacher and he's going to be working with the faculty that are creating that course over the summer. So we have to have a contract with him because he's not technically an employee.
So this is the hired ninth grade physics teacher. We just need him earlier. Right. Okay. That was my question. Does anybody else have any other questions or concerns?
Yeah, I had that question too.
Anything else?
No.
All in favor? You say aye?
Aye.
That brings us, there's nothing under seven or eight, so it brings us to notice of future meetings. So this Wednesday afternoon at 4:30, we are having our retiree honor, honoring our retirees at that ceremony. The reason this is Wednesday and not with the board meeting is our calendar changed when we had to represent the budget for our meetings. But we had previously scheduled this and our teachers who are retiring and their families had- and their families had plans around it already, so we didn't want to change it on them and move the date. So we are leaving the retiree ceremony for Wednesday, but there is actually no Board of Ed meeting on Wednesday, just the retiree ceremony. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, June 11th at 7:00 PM in the auditorium and that will be our budget hearing, just after Ackerman went through before. Then Tuesday, June 18th will be 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, the same as the last time. Budget vote in the Forest Fairly Gymnasium, it's exactly the same, just different date. Please come back, vote again. And then Thursday, June 20th, we will be back here to hopefully adopt the approved budget. Can I have a motion, please, to adjourn at 6:30? Yeah?
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.